And then we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Jeremy Mask, present.
Melissa Keller, present.
Roger Canoy, present.
Monica Strange, present.
Eddie Venami, present.
And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll go ahead and review the I-35 mission statement and our district priorities. Mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society." Our district priorities, one, articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement; two, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century; and number three, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness." Everybody should have gotten the agenda. If there's anything that needs to be done to the agenda, or a motion to approve the agenda would be welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to three minutes. Five minutes. Five. It's my eyes, I'm getting old. Five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. We do have a couple individuals who have signed up to speak. We will start with Mr. Gibson.
Sorry I've missed the last couple. I don't think this mic's on. I want to talk to you about why I've missed the last couple, actually. It's primarily because I've been traveling to Tampa for work. And the reason why we're doing this is strategic planning for our work. So, my team, approximately 285 people globally flying to Tampa, and we review the strategic priorities, and they present to me some options in order to meet those strategic priorities that I have. And we discuss those as a group, and ultimately I'll make a final decision and direct the staff on what vendors we're gonna buy, for example. And I'm gonna draw this back home here, for example. So, that's what I've been doing. Unfortunately, each time, each month, I've been traveling to Tampa, fell on board meetings. So, this time I'm happy to be able to be here. How that relates to what I'm talking about here is, I'm gonna go back to transparency again. We have this very long set of decisions that are gonna be made after this meeting. So, you're gonna adjourn, and then you're gonna go into a meeting. And this was recently published, right? So, not a whole lot of time for constituents and members of the community to talk with their board members about this. Thought about knocking on your doors over the holidays and calling ya, but I didn't want to because I wanted to spend the holiday with my daughter. She was back from Texas. In particular, how this relates back to what I was talking about is, some of these decisions on here, I'm actually recommending the board not approve tonight. That they ask Sharon to go back and do a little bit more due diligence and some transparency for the community, particularly Section 5(c) and 5d, where we talk about the legal counsel recommendation and the school insurance recommendation. I don't see any other options. So, my team gives me options, first, second, third, and what their recommendation should be, and some of the pros and cons before I make that decision. There's not a whole lot of transparency in here, is why we have EMC. And how that specifically relates to our strategic priorities and our rural district where we're at, I'm gonna bring this back to the safety concerns that I've brought up in the past. We need to have better security for our kids here. And a lot of that has to do with insurance companies, and insurance companies, whether or not they would support that. So, I would ask questions. Have we talked to Spirit Lake? Have we talked to the Cherokee School District? What insurance company are they using that supported their decisions to allow their staff and teachers, or I'm sorry, in particular, staff, to go armed to protect the students? So, those are some of the questions before we just decide on EMC, who I'm guessing is probably not gonna be very supportive. What are some other options? The same thing with our legal counsel. What are some other options, pros and cons, that represent our school district in our unique situation that we're rural? We're not in inner-city. We're not near police response like our sheriffs all the way in Madison County. So, that relates back to, are we looking at these things and looking at our situation and making sure we're making recommendations for our legal counsel and our insurance that meets the needs of our district? And look at those to the community in transparency. Why did we choose that legal counsel? What were our other options? Why did we choose that insurance company and what were our other options? So, I would, again, formally request the board defer 5(c) and 5d and ask for more information from the administration on what other options are out there and what are the pros and cons associated with them? And how do they support our unique needs as a rural school district? So, and again, I'll go back. This should have been published two weeks ago. So, we could all have the opportunity to discuss with our board members and digest it and have a dialogue in the community, not just before a holiday. And then we have, you know, a board meeting on the Monday after the holiday. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it and look forward to your meeting after this one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Kevin Stewart.
Kevin Stewart, I live just south of town. You guys have seen me here before. And so, just a couple things I want to comment on from last meeting. Lot of discussion about substitute teachers and substitute teacher pay. So, after the meeting, I kinda went on the website to see if I could find anything on qualifications for substitute teachers or what the district needs. Either I was looking in the wrong space or there's nothing there. And so, if that's a serious issue, we kinda need to have that locally published so that, you know, we have lots of retirees in the area that, quite frankly, might be very good substitute teachers if they just know what the qualifications are. Also, looking at our staff. Staffing per student at I-35 is pretty high, which, I mean, that's a good thing. But have we fully qualified everyone within our staff? That we have internal people that we can lean on to substitute teach that are already on staff, already on benefits, that we can leverage? So, I think there's some opportunities there. The other thing we talked about, or you talked about, is retention of staff. And, you know, in business, we've been through, we go through, I mean, that's a primary concern. When people leave our company, first thing they tell us, it's about dollars. When we go to the recruiters, who they're now working with, we find that the reason they left is it was either they hated the working environment or they hated their supervisor. And quite frankly, every position I've left, I left because of supervisor. And so, it may require some hard questions, looking internally. What environment are we creating here at I-35? And are we creating the environment that people want to work here? Want to stay here and like who they're working for? Both as a organization and their direct supervisor. The other thing that was talked about was stagnation of enrollment. We have some really cool things going on in this part of the country. And as I've gone to work virtually, I've been thankful for fiber optics up to my door. And I live two miles out in the country. So, maybe that's something we need to focus in on as attracting people to this area. That for the commuters, for those working at home, we do have a pretty good environment for people to work at home. Also, you know, it would appear that we have some pretty good parking spaces on location. Do we have some opportunities, especially with the daycare, to allow commuter parking and carpooling from I-35? And I know there's liabilities that go along with that. It's not just a simple decision. But that is something that might create a reason for, you know, these young parents to consider locating in I-35 so that we can make sure that we have sufficient students coming into I-35 to obtain the optimum financing that we need to have to run the district. And that's all I had for tonight. I will concur. I do agree with the previous speaker. That I think there are opportunities to allow teachers to personal carry. They have to know what they're doing if they're gonna do that. And no teacher should be, feel like they're obligated to carry a firearm. That if you're not comfortable for carrying a, comfortable carrying a firearm, and I do have my permit to carry, by all means, do not carry. That you have to be proficient and know what to do in an emergency situation. Otherwise, bottom line, if you're carrying and you interact, you draw all the attention to you. And so, you are putting yourself at a great deal of risk. But to save others, most that carry would feel that that's worth taking. So, with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Student representative report.
So, we're in the process of still trying to recruit student representatives.
Sorry, I don't know if this is on. So, I have two students that are considering it right now. I think you guys are an intimidating group, from what I hear. So, there's a little hesitation from them about what their role is. So, I've been trying to just encourage them to come watch the board meeting, talk to Will, because Will has made himself available. So, I will continue to work on that. And I think we're gonna tap into Mr. Bonte and Mr. Weber so that they can look to some of our students that are probably sophomores that can be on the board for a couple of years. So, I don't teach those students yet, so I don't have as much of a connect with them. But we'll get one here, hopefully, within the next meeting or two, so.
Thank you very much. Principal reports. Mrs. Woods is actually listed first, so.
I did not bring any data with me today. I will make sure I do so next time. So, any questions, thoughts, et cetera, for me?
I guess I had a question in your report. You've been working to improve your trusted adult numbers. I think we've seen some movement on that going up. Can you talk a little bit about the activities or what you're doing to improve those numbers? How are you, how are you working with the students to get to that point?
Yep, so, Mrs. Reisinger, our K-6 counselor, has kind of taken that on in regards to a teaching standpoint. So, a lot of instructional pieces take place in her class. She also is responsible for collecting that data. So, when we had that original baseline, and then again, when we did it just here recently, she collects that information from the students. So, it's all going through one person. And I would say it's just kind of built into everything. I think about it in small ways, like we added a PBIS store option called Walk the Block. And it just means a kid can take their hard-earned tickets and pay to get time with an adult. And that adult simply walks around and bees whatever that kid needs at that time. And that's worth it to that kid to save up and spend on that. So, we've had a lot of walking the block. Just, it's, to me, the small pieces that we're doing, then I guess some of them are hard for me to think off the top of my head, but that's a prime example of a small, you know, opportunity that kids are taking full advantage of. And at first, teachers honestly didn't know how to handle that. Like, I gotta teach a class. Like, how am I supposed to walk the block? How long do I walk the block? And where do I walk the block? And they said, it doesn't matter where you walk. This kid paid for your time and attention. And you can walk whatever until you feel the job is done. And if you need coverage, just tell us. And so, it's just shifting kind of our energy to make those types of experiences possible that I think have a large impact on that. And teaching components between point A and point B as well. Yep.
So, grandparents day.
Yeah.
Do you have a number of grandparents that were here?
I have no idea.
No idea?
No, they ran every single one of them through Raptor, so I'm sure we could go back and check.
It was well-attended, though, correct?
It was extremely well-attended, yes.
Good.
Yep, it was, you know, from an analytical standpoint, I think about what went not well. And we've come up with some solutions and things for those pieces. But overall, we've received nothing but positive feedback and, from kids and grandparents and parents, so.
Good.
Yep.
Can you give me an example of self-govern? Just what that means for a student?
Which bullet point are you referring to?
It was bullet three. Communicate and self-govern and regulate the culture.
Yeah, so, I guess I think about it as, when you're in a room full of kids, I guess it comes down to philosophy of old school and new school, or whatever you wanna call it. But research suggests that kids don't necessarily learn as much when they're being taught, more so than when they're engaging in their own learning. I kinda think about it like, who's in control of whether you learn this lesson today or not? Well, you are. You know, I can do a funny dance and say corny jokes and, you know, give you a graphic organizer, but attainment of the learning goal is ultimately up to the student, right? And so, this goes back to that, that we're also a community of people. And they need an opportunity to act in those roles, to lead their own culture and own classroom environment and be able to have those conversations and things like that. So, to me, that's part of, you know, being able to say statements like, I feel blank when this happens. And maybe we could do this. And to me, it's giving them ownership of their environment and allowing them to drive a little bit of that. You know, some of that that traditional education may have taken out of their hands. Yep.
And I just wanted to comment, sorry. I like to see the collaboration with the other surrounding schools. So, that's encouraging to see, because I think there's a lot that we can learn from other districts and a lot that we can share. So, thank you for being open to that.
Thank you.
You note that you're gonna be setting up a peer review process for teachers? Is that including all teachers to get involved in reviewing? Are you gonna like pair 'em up, or how?
So, right now, it's kind of, I would say, much more natural. So, in a discussion, you know, we have these leadership teams in our buildings. And mine, at the particular juncture where they made that decision, talked about the value of learning from others. That every time they walk into someone else's room, they learn something that they can go apply. And making that learning a priority was important to them. So, right now, they've just set a simple expectation to get out and do one. I have kind of two things in place. One, if they have something specific they wanna see, and they let me know, I can make sure that they're covered at that specific time to make that function. And the other thing is, I have asked Crispin Addict, one of our substitutes, to set aside three days between now and February 16th, I believe it is, that she could come into the building with her own plans ready. And she could walk in any room and say, would you, do you need to go do a peer review? And if they say yes, then she has content and materials planned. So, it takes the weight of planning, lesson plans off the table so that that natural learning and collaboration can take place.
Very nice.
Thank you. You're smiling at me.
I'm smiling just because.
So, I guess I do have to comment. The paying to get a teacher's time reinforces just good behavior because then when the teacher gives you attention during class, it's like, wow, I got rewarded for not having to pay for it, rather than, oh, the teacher's picking on me or something. So, it just, I really like that concept, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Woodson.
Good evening. I think I was out of town taking care of my grandchildren the last time we had a board meeting. So, what questions might you have of me?
I don't have a question, but I really was intrigued on, I think it was Thanksgiving something. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was handwritten notes.
Yep, gratitude letters.
Gratitude letters, okay, thank you. Going out and I just, I'm very encouraged by that because you start feeling old when you say handwritten notes are very powerful. But no matter what age, what age you are, the difference between an email and a handwritten note is night and day difference. So, I thought, I think that was, I hope that the students saw that in giving those out, too. And honestly, the staff and teachers probably saw that, too. So, I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, we were hoping that was gonna be an enjoyable moment. We were trying to think of building kids as citizens. And we continue to think of that as the building leadership team. And what can we do to make it real for them, so.
I would just, I had a question on the partner one and partner two and the literacy goals. Do they, has that usually been done with a teacher, or has that always been paired with kids?
Oh, you're looking at last week, or last month.
Oh, jeez.
That was in our fluency, when we read.
Yeah, yeah.
Partner one reads, partner two records what words, how many words they read correctly, and then if there was a mistake. So, that's part of the process.
Got it.
Actually, it's going pretty well. I know that we're gonna be making some more changes in that work. We have everyone working on fluency. Not everybody needs to work on fluency. We're also working with vocabulary and comprehension. And then the next thing will be to begin writing and how we break down that passage so that students become more detail-oriented. We're finding that students are reading just to read fast. And some students are not reading for meaning. So, we're really working on that, too.
Got it, cool. And sorry, we have a gratitude letter hanging on our fridge, because Katie sobbed and she got one.
Awesome.
Our kids haven't made the fridge, but this young man did, so.
And I know that.
It did make a difference.
I know that some of the students wrote to teachers that they had in the past. So, they were probably very surprised that they even received a note. And plus, the teachers were able to walk the students around the building. It wasn't, hey, you just have to sit in here. Now, we're gonna walk around and hand-deliver them. So, it was, I think, a great idea. And the BLT team come up with that, so.
I just wanted to comment. I think that's a great idea, because I taught my kids, as they were growing up, to send thank-you notes to grandparents, or, you know, after holidays, or just throughout the year, if they do something with them. So, I think that's a very special thing to teach kids, to be thankful, because so many times, they just don't think
Right.
about what that really means, what they've done for them, or what, you know, how much that can really mean and how good that can make them feel also.
Yeah, it's a win-win for all parties.
I just wanna say again, thank you for putting all your hard work into the Veterans Day tribute. It was amazing.
It wasn't my hard work.
Well, I know, it wasn't just you. It was a ton of people.
Entirely those young people. You get out of their way and let them soar. And very impressive, I mean, your son, too, but, and lots of staff that supported this work. So, it was awesome. And I'm proud of them, and I hope that we continue to grow. And in fact, I gave a survey just to the students so far. I haven't given it to the adults, but they have some really good ideas for next year. So, I was impressed with that, too, because there were some good ideas that come out of it, and very positive. And students that you didn't even ask to come help, they just started helping with chairs and tables and, I mean, and decorations. It was just amazing, so. Good community effort. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonte.
Good evening. So, I'll just talk a little bit about what we've been doing at the high school. Our focus is really, in our BLT, is looking at both of our D and F lists and our tardies. That is something that is on our forefront of what we're looking at. And I've actually posed our teachers this week in our PLCs to help solve that problem and looking outside the box on how we're gonna better support our kids. Because as we start to transition to SRG, we need to have all of these different parts of the puzzle already aligned and ready to go, whether it's our retake policy, whether it's our instruction in our classroom. And some of those things, we need to readdress. With about 75% of our core teachers new this year at the high school, kind of relearning a lot of these things, or learning it for the first time. We've got teachers that are new to the job, teachers are new to the position, teachers that were in a college class just three months ago. So, I mean, we've got a gamut of different staff this year. And so, working with each one of them, getting to know them so that we can help them grow for the years to come. You know, I agree with the speaker sentiments that we need to have this as a place that our teachers want to come. They wanna stay, they wanna grow, they wanna be better. And if we're replacing them every couple of years, we can't continue, I mean, we're gonna have to constantly reteach. And we know that's gonna be part of it, but we can't do it to that extent every year, or our product that we put out for our students won't be as good. And so, that's something that we're looking at through our BLT work. And I'll also talk a little bit, Mrs. Detlinger has tasked our admin group, along with the directors, of reading a book called Multipliers. And a lot of what you're hearing is a lot of that. How can we get more of our community, whether it's our students, our staff, our teachers, or just our community members, to step up and say, I wanna help? And you see that through the Veterans Day, you see that through the Grandparents' Day. All of those different things are engaging our students and our community members in the work that we wanna do as a community to help better all of us. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So, looking at your report, you talked about looking into how to reduce the number of tardies students have throughout the day. Is that a big problem?
Oh, huge problem. And I can tell you that, you know, the first month or so of my job was pretty involved with just dealing with behavior, getting to know students, things like that. And then I got that first tardy report, and I had 70 students that were at the top level of our tardies. You can't go back and meet with 70 students and readdress it. And so, what we've had conversations with staff is, one of the things that I noticed when I'm walking through the halls in those first couple of weeks, we didn't have any teachers in the hallways. And if we don't have teachers in the hallways, getting kids to class, that's an issue. So, we've kind of addressed that, and we've started to see those numbers come down. But we're at a part, I mean, and I'll just say it, you know, we all make mistakes or don't get things done. But it, I mean, you can't address every single one of those behaviors when you first get that report and you've got 80 kids to meet with and they all have the top level of your consequence. We can't do that. And so, one of the things that we're talking about in our BLT groups and in our staff is, what are we gonna do to better address this for second semester? So that we're gonna have to start over, is essentially what we're saying. And so that the kids know exactly what the expectation is, what the consequences for not meeting that expectation are. Because I guess, coming in, I didn't realize it was that big of a problem with kids getting to class. But it is a pretty big problem from time to time. And with those really chronic people, we're just honing in on those. But with just the sheer number of the previous, it's gonna be really hard to go back at this point in the semester. So, we'll address it for second semester.
Thank you.
Do you think it could be that there's not enough time to get from class? I mean, are you looking at the data, like, do they need to go to the bathroom? Do they, do they need to go to their locker? Did the teacher hold them up? Did they have questions? I mean.
I think that you're gonna have a couple of those off kind of situations where, yeah, a kid needed to go to the bathroom. But for those students, if they check in and they do the things they're supposed to do, they wouldn't be counted tardy. And I can tell you, from when I come in the morning and I have to walk my kid all the way down to the daycare and come back for a 7:15 meeting, I can walk down and back in three minutes, no problem. And I'm walking with a four or a five-year-old now. So, I don't think it's a problem. Those kids that come from the CTE building, I know they let them go about a minute early to get them back in the building. I don't think it's a time issue in that regard. Three minutes.
And then, I guess I was gonna ask on the Ds and Fs, is it higher this year, lower? Is it about the same?
I kinda did, you know, and again, I wasn't looking at the data from last year. Talking to the coaches, they said for this last poll, it's pretty typical because it's in between sports seasons. And so, they said that that, but I don't know if that's just a way to defer the issue and just say, it's just normal. To me, it's not normal for a third of your students to have a F. And so, we, we've got to do something different, right? And, and so, that starts in the classroom, and it starts with instruction. And so, my, my weekly that I sent out this week to, to all staff, I said, our PLC time this week is going to be used to solve this issue. With 70 students on a DNF list, we have to do something different to help support these kids and make them accountable, but hold them accountable, right? We can't just say, you need to do it. If you don't do it, we're not going to do anything about it, right? There's got to be that next step. So, how am I going to continue to hold you accountable? Because, you know, our job is in loco parentis, and, and our, their parents aren't here when they're here, and so we have to be their parent, and we have to hold them accountable. And, and at the end of the day, you might have a few students that aren't going to pass a class, but I believe that almost every single one of our students can pass every single class that they can take if they put their mind to it, right? And so, you know, like what Mrs. Woods is doing and what Mrs. Woodson are doing, all those things will trickle up. We've just, we've just got to have a few years to get all these parts of the puzzle in place, and I think we're all doing good work. We're creating multipliers within our people, and I, and I think our students are understanding that they're going to be held accountable. It's just one of those things where you can't do everything right now, the first day, right? You've got to kind of do things slowly. You have to figure out who your staff is. You've got to keep them engaged in the work we're doing as well as keeping our students engaged in what they need to be doing.
You mentioned that. You mentioned that the coaches say it's in between seasons.
That's, that's what, that's what a couple of coaches have told me.
So, how many students on this list are athletes?
Are athletes? That's a good question. I don't, I don't have that data right now.
Okay, because that would be something interesting to look into because you shouldn't just be trying to get good grades during your sports season.
Hundred percent.
So, that seems like a disconnect if it is.
We need to make sure that our students are going to school and they have a purpose for why they're here. And until we create that purpose for every single one of our students, you're, you're going to have those Fs, right? So, we have to create that purpose, like, even if it's like, hey, I don't enjoy math, but I know I'm going to do math because I have this goal in mind, and I have to cross this bridge to get there. And so, we have to create that mindset for all of our students, and, and that's a hard task.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Mr. Weber.
Any questions? Mine's pretty straightforward, a little easy this, this time around.
Do you do anything specific to celebrate the exit of a special ed kid?
So, in, we do individually. So, A, as a team, we do. We talk about it. We recognize it in our district PLC anytime it happens. We actually do it for the 45-day outs as well, which we have two more now since I sent that, so that are on 45-day outs. The goal would be is that we could be at seven, you know, here in the next couple of months. Individually with a student, you know, you have a, a IEP meeting to exit, and depending on the age of the student is if they're in that meeting or not. And so, a lot of times we'll ask, especially with the older kids, to come to that meeting at the end so that we can give them praise and do all of that. I know as we ended up last year, a handful had, in May, hadn't earned their way out. And we were, you know, Mr. Castor was here, and we would tell, you know, Mrs. Detlinger, we would tell, like, hey, he just exited. How great is that? And I remember with two, two students specifically because they, they were in special programming outside I-35, then transitioned into I-35 last year, and then transitioned out of Sped. I mean, it went that quick. And so, it, yeah, we make it kind of a big deal. It's, it's pretty cool, so.
Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
So, I have a couple of things on here. We had the Iowa Association of School Board Conference two weeks ago already, and I think that that's always kind of a good time to think about processes, how we do things, look at what other school districts do, just maybe develop collegial relationships with other people who do similar jobs as us. I was, I was pleasantly surprised when one of my former students, when I was a teacher way back when in Carroll, came up to me, and he's been on the school board and Solon, and, and when I was teaching government class, that's one of the things that we, they had an option of doing is just going to a school board meeting and just seeing what the function was, or a city council meeting, or, you know, just how to be active in government. So, I was really excited that he, he was able to, to visit with me. So, that was, that was one of the highlights for me anyway, in addition to some of the other things. I know that Jeremy was there for a couple of the days, and Melissa was there. So, anything you guys want to add about the sessions you went to? I went to a session on engaging learning, and what does that look like? And the, the, the group was kind of a collective group from multiple different agencies and entities. So, there was AEA, NASA, a school librarian or a media specialist, a teacher and her kids. And so, it was kind of this eclectic group of people who made a learning, learning opportunity for students and, and applied it to the world that they live in. It was a sixth grade class. So, it was really interesting, and I think the more about how Mr. Stewart talked about our, our, you know, internet capabilities and how we have to sometimes look beyond ourselves. I think one of you mentioned the Pleasantville School coming to visit, and what are we doing in our three-year-old program? Like, making those connections and, and using each other to be better is, I think, what we're going to have to do. And so, I, I was pleased with that presentation and, and kind of the takeaways from that. We also had, I thought our lunch speaker on Thursday was excellent. She was talking about communication and what that means, both for the sender and the receiver in the world that we now live in. And I thought that that was engaging is that we talk about cellphone policy, and we talk about kids', you know, social interactions and how they, how they address problems sometimes. Those were all really good things to kind of bring to the forefront again and just devote time to it. So, do you guys want to share anything from your?
Yeah, I attended a couple of them that, one was about social media responses and just communicating, communicating, you know, how, when and how to communicate, how soon to the public, and so that was good to just hear what other schools are doing, what other methods they're using, and just their process. Connecting with other board members, that's always great. Again, just the collaboration to hear what they're doing in their other districts. I sat on Finance 201 with Ted, so luckily Ted was next to me. That was great. So, but yeah, I learned a lot, and there's, there's a lot of good things with ISAB. There's a lot of resources that they have. So, I think just to continue to, to tap into that is, is, is good to know that we have that, so.
This is the mic that hums, and so usually try and turn it off and lift it on. Anyway, so I, I attended three days, and some of the sessions were better than others. I mean, you're always going to have that. One thing that is apparent to me is we have a lot of dedicated employees at ISAB who are working very hard to support our mission, and that's the mission of every school in the state. The session on Friday was extremely beneficial. It was presidents and vice presidents of school boards. And it wasn't as well-attended as I thought it probably could have been, but we talked a lot about the security reviews that were going on. We talked a lot about social media, how boards use social media, how communities use social media, and what, what the ramification of, of, of those programs are. And we also talked quite a bit about what steps should be taken to secure buildings. Storm Lake and, or, uh, Storm Lake and, or Spirit Lake and Cherokee, neither one of them were there, which a lot of, a lot of folks had commented it would have been nice if they would have been so, we could have asked them some of the questions that I think we all had on, on their process and why they've taken the steps they have. We just, we talked about insurance as well, and ISAB's stance on that whole thing is that they aren't supportive of moving in that direction just because of the insurance factor. So, it was, it was a good week. I thought it was very informative, so. And I appreciate everybody taking the time to go.
So, the other, the other thing that we've spent, Jen Baughman and I spent quite a bit of time on was our roundtable discussions, which we, I instituted the first year that I came, the idea that staff, regardless if you were a custodian or a cook or a teacher or, you know, office support, whatever your role was, you would have the opportunity to, to visit with me about anything that, that you wanted to talk about. So, we have, typically try and have two roundtables a year, and Jen Baughman and I meet, and we really just listen. What's going well? What, what suggestions do you have? What do you have concerns about? Kind of trying to get an idea of what, what's happening from a teacher lens. We ask that the directors and the administrators are not present because, you know, if there's a concern there, then we want to be able to have an open conversation around it. So, those have been well-received for the, for the most part. We have one group that doesn't as, attend as much, but I, I have a lot of those people that just stop in my office, so I, I feel pretty good that we have an idea of what's going on. So, themes that came out of this year, a lot of teachers are really excited about the culture, about the work around data and using data to make those decisions, which we've talked about with our MTSS model and, and kind of putting that in place for the last couple of years. And they're actually seeing, you know, our administrators take a lead on what that looks like and guiding those conversations and discussions. So, there's a lot of positivity there. There's a lot of excitement about the culture, Veterans Day, Grandparents' Day, the things where we're getting people back into the building and celebrating kind of what we value here and what we, what we want to be known for. And then, we, we typically have lots of concerns about communication. I would say we don't have many, but the ones we have are very easy for us to target and address. And so, we've had some conversations already around that. And then there were some questions about, you know, there's been a lot of talk, I would say, in the last two years, three years, about, you know, teacher apprenticeships and para-apprenticeships and getting additional subs in the building, and, and what can we do? So, generating ideas around hiring and retention, and so we have a discussion, I would say, with, with two or three of the groups every year about that and come away with some good ideas. So, I don't know if you, you get social media or not, but we had in the tri-corner, they thought if we were very explicit about the positions we had open and that you can work the hours that your kids are in school and that you can, you know, be off the days that your kids are off, that that might appeal to, to a base of people who are at home and just don't know. So, we talked about that and put that in the paper as well as on social media. So, the idea is how will we target, knowing that, and that everybody reads the paper, and not everybody gets social media, but just trying to get it out there in, in three very different but strong communities. So, those are things that we took ideas from and we started with even last week. So, those are all themes that kind of came out of this year's roundtable that we'll be working on at the administrative level and, and recognizing the positive things, but also kind of coming up with plans of attack for those things that we know we need to still work on. So, those are the roundtables. Anybody have questions about that process or? And then I just have the Veterans' Day celebration and the Grandparents' Day celebration. Again, I felt like we were, you know, it's truly who we want to be, right? It's, it's that celebration of our students. It's a celebration of, of who they are, where they come from. It's about our, you know, and the pride in we have, and, you know, I, I'll just give you two images. So, we're in here for Veterans' Day, and I think Melissa was here for that. It was kind of rainy and misty, but every person that came in was just, you know, just smiling, right? I mean, you, you have to smile when you're in a school because it's just so loud and so fun and so much energy. And I remember that the band had been practicing, and they went through each of the different armed forces, their theme song. And as that song was being played, the veterans stood up. And it was just, it was so powerful, and our kids were just in almost awe, right? Like, they were, they were just glued, and our students performed it so well, and I know they were all nervous. And it was just a great way to showcase not only our talents and our kids, but also recognize the great people we have in our community that we want to, we want to continue to be, be a part of our school. So, that was really, really awe-inspiring. And then Grandparents' Day I wasn't here for. I had an appointment, but I'll tell you one of the stories a grandmother told me is she said, I just was so excited that, apparently they got seated first, and when they were seated, the kids filed in and were sitting up there. And so, the grandparents were actually turned around looking for their grandkids and waving. You know how it's kind of reversed when it's the other, you know, grandkids are usually looking around at their grandparents, so the grandparents are all turned around waving to their grandma and grandpa, or the grandma and grandpa were waving to their kids. And the smiles and the pictures, I think, really spoke up to the, to the enjoyment that day. So, we look forward to more of those things in the spring. The other thing that I, I don't have on this agenda, but I do want to bring up because it's something that we talked about in our closed session last time, kind of our continued conversation around safety. We did have our safety audits, but I didn't get those until the Tuesday that, or the Monday that this was being published. So, it was published on Tuesday. I didn't get those till Monday, so those will be on the agenda for next time, and we'll review those. But I, the safety team is meeting and going through that. The administrators actually have it kind of in their court right now and are going through it. And then that goes to the sheriff's office, and then we can submit that to the state based on, on kind of that collective audit. So, that's still continuing on. It's just not on the agenda for this week because of the timing of when we receive those reports. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Our consent agenda items. This does require a motion and a second before we can take action. Everybody should have gotten the past meeting minutes. Any corrections should be noted. Monthly bills and financial statement. I believe we all got our, our additional bills on the table. And then, open enrollment information was in the consent items, and our resignations and contracts, which I will go through right now. Don Ferber resigns as an associate. Bonnie Hasmer resigns as an associate. Bobby Hightink resigns as a high school robotics assistant. Josh Klein resigns as facilities, maintenance, middle school, baseball, and high school throwing coach. Maddie Olson hired as a second semester kindergarten teacher. Zadie Hatfield hired as a long-term sub. Katie Siliman hired as a part-time associate. Katie Klingensmith moved from high school head robotics to high school assistant robotics. Amanda Gettis hired as high school head robotics. Heather Wells hired as the drama director. Heidi Boyd resigns as family consumer science teacher. Gloria Brott assigned as interim family consumer science teacher through the 2022-2023 school year. And Jessica Duggan's transferred to associate. These do require a motion and a second, so I'd entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve and the discuss and approve consent items. Excuse me.
I'd second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda items.
Before we vote, I got one quick question on the long-term sub that was hired. So, can you explain what that position is? Is that a full semester, full year benefits? What does that long-term sub represent?
So, we did this last year, second semester with our student teacher. So, we had a student teacher first semester, and then we hired them second semester as a long-term sub. The advantage is they're available every day to us for subbing, which we've all, every day this year, we've needed a sub. So, they would be our first person. The only difference is, is they're hired at that higher sub rate, and so if they, if they are committing to us every day, then they're just getting paid that higher sub, right? That's, that's the only kind of advantage for them. But for teachers that are finishing up student teaching in the, in the fall, it's a way to get them acclimated in our system to see if they're a good fit. They get to see different levels, and so that's, that's what that position is. We tried it last year, had a lot of success. I think the person didn't work one day the whole second semester, and so it was, it was kind of a win for, and she's now in our district as a teacher. And so, it was a way to kind of. And so, it was a way to kind of hopefully build some capacity around what we do here, and what we value, and...
Are there any other questions? All right, there is a motion on the table, and it has been properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We'll go to the SBRC application for increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years. This does require a motion and a second for us to approve.
So, this is, we bring this every year. The School Budget Review Committee allows additional authorized spending authority for three circumstances, and they're listed there. If we have an increase in enrollment, so for example, if we had a huge influx of sixth-grade students, it would give us the spending authority to hire a teacher, knowing that the next year, we would see the funds come from that. If we have an open enrollment outnumber that was not counted in this year's budget, it's a way for a year to make up that difference. And then, for ELL, our English language learners, some students need more than the five years that's allocated, and SBRC recognizes that, and allows to ask for additional funding or spending authority for that. So, this is really just that we can use the spending authority if we need to. You would have to take a vote, actually, when we bring the budget in March, if you want to increase the spending authority by that amount. We just have to put in the request to do that now. And so, if you look at our current enrollment, the only one that qualifies is that second option, open enrollment out. And this year, we had an increase of 21 students that were not counted last year in that number, that we can apply for the funding for. So, that's where that $151,767 comes from. That's the most we can ask for additional spending authority, and right now, it's just to make the request.
Are there any questions on this? Then, this does require a motion and a second for us to take action.
I'll move to approve the SBRC application for increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years.
I'd second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to increase SBRC application for increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That brings us to the end of our agenda for the regular board meeting. We would need a motion to adjourn at this point.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are adjourned.
At this time, I'd like to call, officially call this annual meeting of the I-35 School Board to order. And at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the Office of President of the I-35 Board of Directors. I would ask that nominations be made in the form of a motion.
I'll move to nominate Jeremy Mask as president of the board.
It does require a second. Do we have any more nominations? If you want to make a second, you can, at any time.
I'll make a second to the motion to nominate Jeremy as the president of the board.
Okay, let's take a vote. Answer a or nay when I read your name. Roger?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Jeremy?
Yay.
Monica?
Yay.
Eddie?
Aye.
Okay. So, now I turn the meeting over to you, Jeremy.
All right, we will move right into the election for vice president. I would entertain a motion for vice president.
I'd nominate Roger Canoy for vice president.
Are there any other nominations for this office? Is there a second to the motion?
I would second the nomination.
It's been properly moved and seconded that Roger Canoy be the vice president of the Interstate 35 Board of Directors. All those in favor, signify by aye. Or is this a roll-call vote again? Voice vote? Jeremy Mask, aye?
Jeremy?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Monica?
Aye.
Eddie?
Aye.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors in the Interstate 35 Community School District, as now and hereafter, required by law.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That moves us to the next item on the agenda. Discuss and/or approve the committee representation. Sharon, do you want to go through this, or do you want me to?
Yeah, this is all of our boards that were asked to, that board members are asked to serve on, both in the county and at the school level. So, if you've served in this role, I think it obviously makes sense that if you live in Warren County, you'd be considered maybe the Warren County representative. Same thing for our other counties, but it doesn't necessarily mean you have to, because you actually represent the whole school district. So, we just need to go through and determine who's going to represent the school board in those committees, or conferences. So, Warren County Conference Board.
I did it last year, and I'd be, or the last term, and I'd be happy to. But happy to, you know, if anybody else lives in Warren County, I don't think they do, though.
We can...
Well, you do, if you'd like, if you'd... Okay. Yeah, yeah. Perfect.
I didn't hear that.
Well, so, she said she'd join me to the first meeting.
Okay. See if she wants to do it. Good thinking, Monica.
They're intense meetings, I tell you why.
Madison County Conference Board.
I was on it last year. Jeremy is the only other Madison County or Madison County?
I've done it a number of years, I still got the notices as well, so it doesn't matter.
You can sign me up for it, it's fine.
Roger?
If you're ever unable to attend, let me know, and I might scoot over.
Gotcha.
Clark County Conference Board. Negotiations Committee.
I was on that this past year, and I really enjoyed it. I wouldn't mind doing that again. And I think we had two on it last year.
Can you just talk about, how often do they meet?
Sure. We meet, when we start negotiating, it's, I almost want to knock on wood, but it's been a fairly productive process. So, some of our groups, we have a meeting or two. At the most, I think we've had three with one of the groups over the years. So, it's usually three or four meetings beginning in the spring, and it's usually about a month time commitment, I would say, from beginning to end of the process.
Is that teacher contracts?
It's teachers, so we have two different groups that we negotiate with, the support staff and the teachers. So, we have two different groups that we negotiate with.
I'll take a seat.
Monica? So, Roger and Monica? School Improvement Advisory Committee.
I would actually enjoy being on that again.
And I think we had two reps for this one as well. We don't have to, but just if anybody else wants to be a part of that, they sure can be.
So, I was on the facilities committee, or am, a kind of subcommittee, I guess. I don't know if that even counts, but I would, if somebody's interested in the facilities committee, I would do the CIAC or swap.
I would swap with you.
Okay. Just a different change of pace, I'd love that.
Yeah. So, Jeremy and Eddie for school improvement, and then facilities, I heard. Melissa? And Roger, okay?
This requires a board action to approve?
Not for, I mean, you're just getting a kind of a, you're volunteering to be on that committee, so. You can't, I mean, yes, I would say, just to be on the safe side, but, I mean...
So, we'd need a motion to approve the committees as presented?
I'd move to approve the committees as representations as discussed.
And I would move to second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the committees' representation as discussed. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, now we move on to the superintendent's recommendation on annual designations. I can read through.
So, no, it makes no difference. For our board secretary treasurer, it's recommended that Ted Bauer serve in that role. And if it's okay, I'll just go through all of these, and then you can, we can have discussion at the end of all of them. School depository recommend Union State Bank and ICEJET, which is the Iowa School Joint Investment Trust. The Union State Bank, our Truro maximum depository amount is 10 million, and the ICEJET maximum depository amount is also 10 million. Legal counsel, I recommend Alers &amp; Clooney. School insurance, I recommend EMC Insurance. Official district publication, that's where all of our minutes are published, I recommend the Madisonian. Regular board meeting date and... First lunch steering officer, I recommend Deanne Strange. Our reconsideration committee, I recommend Heather Jelsma, Camden Allen, Katie Monroe, Brayton Weber, Jill McDonald, Tanya Donahue, and Sue Cornelioson. And we do need to fill a student rep on that, if that committee is joined or reassigned this next school year for its purpose. And chief negotiator, I recommend myself.
Are there any questions?
Is it required that we have the same provider if we approve them today? So, for example, if we make a change throughout the school district to address the speakers' considerations, can we change at that time?
Yes, I mean, we just have to take board action.
Right, so it would just require board action.
Right, and if you want to address the speakers' concerns, you can always continue with what we currently use, until you take an action. You know, so if we don't, if we don't change, right now, we have EMC, and we have Alers &amp; Clooney. So, you can take those off. They would still serve in our role, because we have to have somebody. And then, if we decide to take action, that's different. We can make that kind of in the same process we're doing for this. So, you could do it either way. You can either approve this...
But we could approve tonight, and then take a reverse gear if we decide some different path of action in the future. Or, okay, okay.
Yes, I mean, if you don't, if you don't... I mean, if you don't, if you take those off, they're still serving in that role until we take a different action.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
If we were to look into, you know, say, somebody else for insurance. I know the school has used EMC for quite a while. And it's one, it's a lot of school districts in the state use EMC.
A vast majority.
Is there somebody else that we could look into?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely can see if there's other providers, yeah. I know that there are some districts, just like health insurance, there's always different providers, but yeah, we can, we can definitely have that conversation. I think, I think my philosophy in making these recommendations is, we've had good service, we've had fast response time, we get kind of what we're asking for. If it's EMC, we get, you know, an evaluation of what they'll provide and what they won't. We've asked about, you know, for example, our sporting teams and how their insurance works and our, and our board and how that insurance works. So all of those things.
So last year we were I I feel that the twenty is is an important number for us to to continue that longevity and longevity.
Milestone.
Could be an amendment.
I can't amend her motion.
You can offer to do a friendly amendment if she accepts it.
I'll let her think for herself.
No, I would I would accept it. I would amend the motion to be sixty years of age and twenty years of service.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd just say that, you know, it's sounds silly. It's a it's a balance, just like everything else in life. We want to use this to encourage teachers to teach in our in our district for a long time and and grow roots here. But on the other hand, look at how many teachers we replaced this last year. Can we afford to do that every year? We can't afford to do that every year. So realistically, it's our job to make sure that we have our teaching positions filled. And I I think that's I think that's where they're I think leaving it the way we had it last year, I think that's very important.
I just made that adjustment, you know, looking at the years of a couple of the teachers on that list. Because, you know, doing it that way, it's not like it's not like all of them would qualify for it, so.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded to offer early retirement to age sixty and over and twenty.
I Would be also one of the areas we talked about, future expansion, we move to the west there.
Bigger picture next steps, like like what are the steps we would take in order
And and if the board Our coaches Mine already picked
Yes.
Week before is
Yes, we have a lot of activities that week. Okay, Wednesday, December twenty first at five P M. We will get that out in multiple formats to the public.
All right. Thank you very much for everybody getting their calendars out. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
Move to adjourn.